Clerk Park, would you call Committee to Hold to order, please?
Lennon.
Here.
Boywood.
Here.
Liza.
Here.
Fate.
Here.
Gabon.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Okay, we have several items up on the Committee to Hold tonight, all of them from the Berwyn Development Corporation Executive Director, Dave Halsberg. Dave, you want to start out with your 2022 TIF budget recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have a very large spreadsheet with lots of little numbers. It would be this document here. This is the recommended TIF budget that will be coming to us, it's being transferred, and then will be considered with you as part of your budget for 2022. A couple of highlighted items, just to let you know that we included. We are providing for the water main on Cirmac for the future. By 2024, we should have acquired somewhere in the neighborhood of about $2 million, which will help make that project move forward. Additionally, there was some LPR cameras that council had indicated that they wanted to go ahead and move forward on. That is also budgeted for the allocation in each of the respective TIF districts that had these fixed cameras in it, so that's reflected here as well. We did provide a 3% increase this year for the BDC. Those would be the highlights on this proposed budget, but-
On the water main project, did we ever get a decision as to how that, I don't know, future dates, but-
But it is going to be paid with ARC, but we were short a little bit on that project.
Understood, but I mean, as far as him going out to 2024 with the budget?
We're fine, we can use it. Our project can be good all the way to the end of 2026, and we just have to tell them exactly how we're going to use it by 2026.
And as far as the contractor, we could pay it in that increment.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I was looking for, was those dates.
Great.
And as far as the LPR, I know Commander Fellows is trying to get some of those ones that may be in TIF districts on private property, too, so we may not have to allocate that, which you can reallocate depending on what comes out of that, so, okay?
Great, happy to answer any questions associated. And if any members of council want to give me independent calls, understanding the budget, I'm always available just to go ahead and take you through it. What we attempt to do is I look at the budget each year, spreadsheet it out all the way to the end of each of the respective TIFs, do a 3% annual increase on each of those figures for the upcoming years, so it's sort of a moving budget, only from the respect that we never know what the actual tax allocation is going to be, but we go ahead and we continue to update it annually so that you get the most responsive numbers that you can see there.
Any other questions on that item directly?
I'm sorry, Dave, where would I find that $2 million specifically that you mentioned? Is that the overall anything?
You'll find it getting collected over a period of years.
Okay.
So if you look probably midline on the Cirmac or the Harlem TIF, and I can show you a break, I'll pick that up for you. How's that sound?
Well, I'm already here, so it's the Cirmac.
Okay. Yeah, so it's-
The Harlem?
Yeah, I'll tell you which line item number it is.
Cirmac Water Main?
So it's the-
Yes, Cirmac Water Main.
On your third page, you'll go down to, under expenses, the second line, it says Cirmac Water Main, $6 million. You'll see in 2020, we put away $204,000. In 2021, we put away an additional $446,000. So functionally, we're getting to a point of putting close to half a million dollars in a year. Next year, we have $443,000 budgeted to go in there. Now, let's take, for example, if I don't spend the Finish Line Grant dollars in total, we will go ahead and take any excess and we'll throw it into that water main account. So any surplus from any respective year goes back into the budget, will get dropped into the escrow for that water main.
Okay.
And what's good about this is we can be the last dollars in as part of that project, so rather than having to bond out in the future dollars and lose that, we can go ahead and just squirrel it away, be the last payments that are associated with that water main project.
Yeah, because a lot of it's going to be paid from the ARC money to begin with.
Right.
So as Ruth said, we're just falling that $2 million short, and it'll be picked up by whatever our surplus he has there.
So what that will then mean is roughly in 2025, 2026, we'll be able to shift that half a million dollars that's allocated then to some other expense that you would like associated with the Harlem TIF.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on that item? All right, next, Dave, you have your 2022 BDC budget.
Thank you. As part of our contract with the City of Berwyn, it is required that we provide our annual budget to council, just for your acknowledgement. So what I do, just out of a way to make it easier for you, I show you the actual 2020 budget, then I show you the 2021 budget that we were working on, and then what we project to close the year on in each of our accounts, and then what we're budgeting in 2022. I do that as a point of reference, just so you can see where the dollars are and how we've shifted. And again, if there are questions, I can take those offline, anytime that you'd like to go ahead and speak about the BDC's budget. We also publish this on our website. It's a very transparent website, as most of you know.
Any direct questions now?
So the 3% that you mentioned, that's just based on salaries or overhead?
That's, yeah, the overall budget, we've requested a 3% increase to address inflation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item number three, Finish Line Grant, recommended changes.
Yes, we've done very well in trying to get dollars out to the community in the various respective TIF districts. However, we're still finding that there are some surplus dollars, and it seems like it's time to go ahead and evolve the Finish Line Grant maybe to its next level. I say that because we put priority based off of council's input on making sure that we reached out to the small businesses first and the businesses that were already in the community for at least two years. And in doing that, we've been able to do many smaller projects because that's what the mom and pops were looking for, whether it be an awning or a window, where we were on a 50% match up to $10,000. What we'd like to go ahead and do is we'd like to retier this particular project to the second page of that document that I've shared with you, whereas expenses up to $25,000 would be reimbursed at 50%, and then between $25,000 and $60,000 at 40%.
Was that just an email attachment?
No, that's right here.
What's second page?
Follow in the packet. I don't have that package. Is it in the proposed budget package?
That's all we have in the proposed budget package.
That's it? Yeah, I keep some on my, for reimbursement.
Right there.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
There's probably, there's a whole package there.
Okay.
As I was saying, again, go to the second page of that particular memo. $60,000 to $100,000 would be reimbursed at 30%, and $100,000 to $157,000 at 20%. So that grant amount would be, that somebody could receive would be a maximum of $50,000, whereas today it's at $23,500.
All right, Alderman Lennon, you had sent something today for us to recognize about the rat abatement.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Did you ask the question as to exactly what you're-
Also, I saw that out there, that there's some Finish Line Grant money for rodent abatement for the commercial areas, specifically businesses that sell, so that might be something we can market, you know, in the future as well, so do you have any more input on that?
Actually, the Finish Line Grant, two years ago when you approved it, it did include a rat abatement or nuisance abatement, I like that word a little bit better, so we did provide for that, we continue to acknowledge that, and that would be at a 50% reimbursement.
Okay.
And I think the point of him bringing that up and sent it to an email was, is there a way that we can market that a little more as a highlight with the Finish Line Grant, so more of these businesses can take advantage of that?
Sure, and we'll work with code enforcement on that item, too, and anybody that's having issues out there, be excited.
Okay.
So are we saying that we're reimbursing commercial business owners if they do rat abatement in their days?
If they do the Finish Line Grant and they do certain things to address the problem, more than just putting traps out, right.
So if they have to do any remediations or-
Correct, that's what I would presume. Dave, you want to explain a little further?
Yeah, we actually, we will handle any aspect of nuisance abatement as part of their grant program. Now, they're limited on how much they can go ahead and receive, so once you receive the maximum allowable for your property, then you would be on your own. But again, that number is generally about $20,000, so that's many years' worth of abatement that we can help with, and that program's been around for two years. I probably want to say, top of my head, maybe five or 10 businesses I've seen that actually made application under nuisance abatement, but we can go ahead and publicize it more.
Could you give the Alderman just an example of what they applied, what they were granted, based on what they're doing?
Sure, it could be that the nuisance has entered into the property, done damage to the walls, the interior walls now have to be removed, that would be a knowledgeable expense to go ahead and have that done. The abatement itself, of putting up traps, we would consider that as well a reasonable expense, and we would do that, abatement, and if council wants to change that, we're happy to go ahead and follow whatever lead you'd like.
And that purpose has always been in the Finish Line?
Yeah, it's been there for two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so if we can get more information on that and kind of finalize that, we can, you know, push that out there as well, it'd be good.
That would especially help the committee with respect to getting it out there, too, to certain businesses where we could be experiencing problems.
Now, there could be an ability, if council wanted to actually increase this to a maximum grant up to $75,000 and change the percentages, it seemed that this would be a nice next step, going up to 50, based off the dollars that we've had available.
And your recommendation for increasing this is based on what?
It would allow people to do more investment, knowing that if I make the investment, I'm going to get some of the money back, so I'm not having to spend as much. One of the things you'll see when our annual report comes out to you is we look at every one of the projects that receives Finish Line dollars, and we then match it up and say, these public dollars then leverage this private activity investment. So we know for sure that you're going to be looking at somewhere about a two-to-one to a three-to-one or greater dollars invested on the public side, I mean, on the private side, to the public dollars that were invested. Makes sense?
It operates similar to the two programs we have regarding the flooding for the check valves, and also the overhead simmers, and also the replacement of the lead water lines. So it operates as an incentive for people to invest money and improve the properties so that they become code compliant, same kind of thing.
I was just wondering if, based, I was just wondering if you were basing it, like, on the work that's been completed so far, or was it feedback from business owners, or, like, I don't know if you surveyed them to see if the reason for not taking advantage of the programs and finding that they felt it just wasn't worth their, you know, their effort? That's why I was just curious to see.
I would tell you, the intuitive feedback that I've received is, while we love this program, we're glad it's there for the little guy, it would be nice if I could get a little bit more money, and that this sort of program then helps facilitate that, because the cap was at $23,500. Now, if somebody knew that they could go and spend more money and get more money back, they could do more to their property, so it really is an encouragement to them to reinvest greater into their property.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the Finish Line Grant? Okay, David, if we can move on to the 6613, 6631 Ogden.
This item is on the agenda this evening. This item also came to you in some fashion a year ago. So this is for a craft grower who was originally looking at the 6613 property and six through 6621. At that time, they were going to grow, be a craft grower with a grow facility of 5,000 square feet. Lo and behold, the state of Illinois did not issue all the licenses. This particular potential licensee holder had the zoning approvals in place. However, zoning approvals die on the vine after one year if they're not activated. So his original approval passed and is no longer any good. So first action that's being taken and recommended is approving the original approvals so that if, in the event that he gets his license and they don't change the statute all the way up to 14,000 square foot of grow facility, that he's all pre-approved just the way he had anticipated him originally was going to move forward. Two things to be, that are curious here. The first is that we've written in a provision that granted the mayor the authority to make sure the historic architectural nature of the property was maintained. With that is, this particular structure can in no way shape at all, look as if it's a craft grower, so there can be no signs, no indication of what's occurring inside of the building. So some of the things that you are likely to see is, yes, the windows will be boarded up, but they'll be, not boarded up, they'll be enclosed, and they'll have a spandrel glass that we'll put over it that will look like, just like a regular window. So we'll be able to bring back those historic elements. Now, as a result of activity that has now happened in the legislature, and we're waiting for final approval, is the, there will be a change that's coming, that these craft growers will now be able to grow 14,000 square foot. Once that occurs, this property that they're looking at won't meet their needs for a grow facility, so they've acquired the AutoZone property, the former AutoZone property right across the street, and they're picking that up. That would then allow them to grow 14,000 square feet, and they would utilize the first property that they had for production work. So that would be for infusion-type projects, products such as gummy bears or oils, so that their intent would be to use all of the property. Coming with both of these scenarios is a host agreement that provides for an impact fee. Since they are functionally a wholesaler and are not putting any sales, we don't receive any sales tax as a result of it, we wrote this particular provision that we get a minimum of $10,000, plus they have to make a local contribution to not-for-profits within the community with some guidance there, and we get 2%, the city will receive 2% of the net profits of this as the impact fee. That's different than a dispensary, so if a dispensary came in, they're selling to the general public, the sales tax that the city would receive would be both the home rule sales tax and the general sales tax on top of that, and those facilities are rather profitable for those communities that do have that. So you'll see tonight, functionally, you're getting two actions that are happening, one approving the original design of what the project was, and then the second one that says, hey, if our license comes through, and if it goes to 14,000 square foot of grow facility, in that case, we're going to be expanding the operation and being in two structures.
Now, the host agreement, we put it on as a separate item, so it'll be voted on separately here, so Marge and I decided to put it as a separate item underneath a different category.
Okay, great.
Not attached to what you have on with the rest of the stuff, okay?
Yes, sir.
And Dave, it's Pep Boys?
Pep Boys, thank you.
And the other thing is, we, a year ago, when we did talk about this and approve it, we did earmark the money for public safety. Would that still be the, for the host agreement, that revenue that we'll receive without going to public safety, that-
We would, we would go back to what was originally agreed on, that it would be for public safety, correct.
Okay.
Anything else on this one?
Just one question. I thought we had a $10,000 unit for nonprofit. Has it always been five, or did it decrease?
No, I think there was, there's two versions of the host agreement, one for a dispensary and one for-
And that's where the 10 is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item is the, for the Berwyn Shops.
Yeah, this is just an update item for you. We had our groundbreaking for the Berwyn Shops. This is a homegrown project as a retail incubator that will occupy 6931 Roosevelt Road. This will give 12 emerging entrepreneurs, makers, or artisans the opportunity to test out the local market before committing to a full-blown storefront. Participating vendors will be selected from a jury committee of 13 community volunteers. The inaugural season is expected to run from June to mid-December of 2022. We're calling this the cohort class of 2022. City Council unanimously adopted a resolution which approved a property management agreement with the BDC and authorized $200,000 of tax increment financing funds from the Roosevelt Road District towards the project. The BDC committed another $50,000 of its own funds. Together, these funds were expected to cover the project of $250,000. Due to some unforeseen changes, material costs, maintenance fees, the budget increased to 310. In response, the BDC has solicited in-kind financial support from our community partners. To date, BMO Harris contributed $25,000, Republic Bank, $5,000, Wintrust, $5,000. Industrial Fence out of Chicago agreed to commit to the full cost of all the wrought iron fencing around the project, so we're seeing even more folks continue to agree to contribute to help make this project a reality. On December 7th, the mayor and Cook County Commissioner Aguilar and other elected officials joined us as we broke ground on this project. I'm happy to report, all the concrete is now poured, so if you go by the site, you're going to be able to start to get a sense of what it's going to look like. You'll start to see, beginning in the next two weeks, right beginning the first of the year, the erection of these cottages going up, so we're excited with that. The official website for Project Homegrown is called berwynshops.com. It was launched on November 18. It highlights three ways that individuals can get involved in the incubator, either as a shop vendor, a jury committee member, or a community partner. Each page offers background information and downloadable packets and forms to complete the required application online. In the last three weeks, the project and website have received overwhelming positive responses. At the time that I wrote this, there were 1,600 individuals that visited berwynshops.com. That number has now increased to more than 2,000. We've had over 2,000, 200 downloaded applications on how to be a vendor, a jury member, or a community partner. So we're excited with the great response. We've had now 38 folks that have applied to be vendors. That's really surprising to us, but it shows that there's huge interest in this idea of growing a business from being a pop-up shop at a farmer's market, or a flea market, or a French market, and make something more out of it, and grow them to be our own entrepreneurs in our community. And so our goal will be, we'll take them from these shops and then graduate the ones that are ready to go to a brick-and-mortar store and help them get landed here in Berwyn. So great feedback we're receiving from many people, so I think kudos to this board for, you know, stepping up, seeing the dream, and helping to make it a reality, so I thank all of you.
And the BDC has kept up with Matavia to see their success rate in landing some of those businesses in the brick-and-mortar, and the young lady from Matavia actually did a presentation at the groundbreaking, and they've had good success in landing some of those people in brick-and-mortar in the town. So that was good. Any questions on that? Okay, the Aronella Platte.
The Aronella Platte, this is a platte at 2609 South Harlem. It is a piece of property that's functionally an old parking lot that was only deeded as a parking lot, and the property owner decided it didn't make sense to pay the taxes anymore, he would just collect the fees from all the abutters and pocket that and let the property go into arrears. What our concern was, was if somebody else got their hands on this particular piece of property, it would cause negative impacts on all of the abutters from what they would be able to do. So let's take some examples here. As you look at that particular platte, and you look from right to left, you'll see lots four and lots three. Those are two residential homes on each of those. They're owned by two sisters, their sister buildings, they mirror each other as you drive by it on 26th Street. If you look to the back of their property line, that you see there to the south or on the lower portion, you'll see that there's functionally a rectangle under each one of those. They've been enjoying that property themselves for as long as they've owned the property, however, they don't own it. This was property that was originally designed to be a buffer for the parking lot. Our concern was, could you imagine if somebody else bought this parking lot and tore down those trees? These poor residents would have within 10 feet of their home or so, an expanded parking lot. Their parking, their value of their homes would be decreased as a result of the parking that was occurring, the privacy would decrease. So we agreed to them, each of them, that we would sell these two pieces of property to each of them at $4,000 apiece. I can actually tell you, it's not covering all of our legal expenses in doing that, just because of what we have to do to make this legal, but we saw it as the right thing to do. Next, on lot one and two, if you think in your head, what's there are two apartment buildings, two stories on each, each containing roughly 10 units there, and they would have no parking. So they've been enjoying parking in this lot for many, many years, they are not entitled to that. If somebody else had bought this property, they could have held that property owner up for lots of money, but we agreed to sell it to them for a $40,000 cost. And then there's a remaining portion of this property that looks like a pizza slice, so if you go over to the far corner of this platte, that's got the little insert in the lower right-hand corner, you can look at that little sliver that looks like a pizza pie slice. That piece will be going with lot five to the dialysis center, and they'll be able to have additional parking for their customers and employees, something that they greatly need because the competition for parking over there is such. So that's some more good news. They'll be acquiring that property for $45,000. Our expenses all in, the BDC spent about $20,000, thereabouts, on legal fees, plats, et cetera, on this property, and we will generate some profit associated with it, which, again, you can anticipate that the BDC will giving, be giving that back to the community.
And years ago, the person who owned those lots, because he only sold part to the dialysis center, was going to donate the property to us, did not indicate, though, the back taxes that were owed, there was far more than what we paid for that property, so we declined it back then because of the amount of taxes that were owed on the property.
So this is just another good example of how property we take from the Cook County Land Bank as the representative of the City of Berwyn, and then turn it around and make something good of it.
Right.
I had talked about how the BDC takes its money and then reinvests it in the community. A good example of that, and it's the next memo that you see, is the Berwyn Internship for Small Businesses. I just want to give you an update there. The BDC solicited businesses in the community that might be interested in having a webpage and a social media campaign provided to them at no cost by Morton College students that would then be paid for by the BDC. So the BDC contributed $50,000 to Morton College, and will be doing this internship program coming up in January, and then again in April for 10 businesses at a time. So 20 businesses in total will benefit from this program, but it was great to see the competition on how many businesses were actually interested. We had a total of 20 businesses, I'm sorry, more than that, we had, I want to say it was about 32 businesses that competed and asked for the intern. So great news, and on the college side, they had a lot of students that are interested in participating as well, so a nice win-win for everybody here.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, the last item we have is the pay-as-you-go for the Realty of Chicago.
So this, this is one that, I try to bring these items, pay-as-you-go, early on to council to get your feedback, and know how to go ahead and process it, and whether there's interest or not. Realty of Chicago has purchased a property at 6505 through 6509 Cirmac. It's a former vacant funeral home, and in the spring of 2021, they acquired it- It's a former vacant funeral home, and in the spring of 2021, they acquired it for $826,000. They intend to invest more than $1 million to convert the property into their agent offices and business headquarters. Realty of Chicago would be seeking a Pay-as-you-go redevelopment agreement in order to complete this project. So I'm going to stop there and explain once again what a Pay-as-you-go type project is. Many municipalities go ahead and they take their TIF funds, and they say, "Here you go, here's the money," and throw it right at you. And it could be a big dollar number, $100,000, $200,000. Berwin has taken an approach that says, "No, we're not going to give you money upfront when it comes to larger monies." In fact, what you have to do is you have to go ahead and you have to earn it. Means you have to prove up that you've done what you said you were going to do. And so what the Pay-as-you-go would do is, it simply takes the base taxes that somebody gets, comes in at, and let's just imagine, I'll make numbers easy, that it's $10, okay? So they were paying $10 of taxes. They make improvements to a piece of property. Now the new tax bill is $14. So there was an incremental difference of that four. That then says, under a Pay-as-you-go, you could be eligible to get that $4 back for eligible expenses as part of your project. So it's nothing we give upfront. It's money that only is created by them from their own taxes that is then given back to them. Albeit, had they not made the improvement, these dollars wouldn't be there. So from an investment portfolio point of view for the city is, we're out nothing. Because again, if it didn't get developed, it's no harm, no foul here. I think that everybody understands the concept, so I'll continue. So the BDC had the property appraised, and I can tell you, we had it appraised very early on. We looked at this property ourselves to do something with several years ago. And in fact, when I toured the building, I found that the rafters and flooring on the second floor and upper floors were removed. So I immediately alerted the mayor, the mayor alerted the fire chief, and we tagged the building. Had there ever been a fire, there would have been grave consequences for our firemen who walked through a door only to realize there's no floor there. The city took legal action against this property and that property owner, trying to bring resolution to it, and it was still into the courts up until the purchase of this property. So, the value of the property that we had it appraised came in at $200,000, including the cost of the demolition. So I want to say technically what it really was is, the appraisal came in at $400,000 less demolition. The appraiser only looked at it as a land value, because how far gone this particular building is. So, as we then looked at it, removing the $200,000 from the purchase price leaves a value of, leaves a price of $626,000. Combined with the $1 million-plus investment, this brings the total project eligible at $1.6 million. Under our Pay-as-you-go plan, our general thought, based off of council input originally, was that we would go with a 25% eligible cost of a project as an incentive agreement. Now, that's not to say that you couldn't go more, or you couldn't go less, but the general rule would say is, we're going to go with 25%. If we had an outstanding project, and that really relied on this dollar that had to, that they had to achieve 30% to make their numbers work, and do the BUT4 test, then we could be supportive of that. In this instance, what had been talked about was the 25% eligible project cost of $406,500, or whichever is less. In seeking this Pay-as-you-go redevelopment agreement, Realty of Chicago has indicated that they are committed to maintaining the historic character of the building, including agreeing to preservation of the building facade. Some of you may recall, we had a historical study done of the Sirmac corridor. This building was identified as one of the key structures in that corridor to go ahead and preserve. Realty of Chicago will have 150 agents and contractors out of this location. They will be hosting clients, as well as encouraging shopping and dining along Sirmac with their employee base. Our recommendation is that we would like to proceed, but seeking advice and counsel at this particular time, before we start working on documents or anything of that nature, to get the flavor of city council.
They will also have a community center in the first level for organizations such as scouts, or things of that nature, to use at various times during the year. So they're going to provide that for the community also. Questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. So, Dave, thanks for going through all of this. I know this is a lot. I just wanted to just get a little bit more information, because I'm newer, and just to ask you, what does the BDC look for in Pay-as-you-go applicants? Like, what are you guys looking for when you're working with potential projects and businesses?
Key things that we're looking for is the investment that the property owner is making and the number of jobs that are getting created. If somebody's not investing in the building, there's no reason to do the Pay-as-you-go because they're not going to be adding value over the base right now. Second thing I indicated that we're really looking for is, how many jobs are getting created out of the property? And what are those jobs paying, and what do they leverage into the community? So if I look at 150 jobs, and I can tell you that, you know, the range of the brokers that are involved there and the staffing goes on the high side of $300,000 and $400,000, down to a broker who would be doing a part-time basis at $10,000 or $15,000 a year. So there's a wide range. But what this particular investor is doing with this property is, yes, he's going to hold on to it as his corporate offices, but he is going to be making significant investment, bringing a number of jobs into the community, some of which are already here, but maintaining a strong presence here. So that's very important to us. Third, you know, what will it do for the properties around it? And that's where we think that's another big win. These people are going to be looking for something else to do in the area, so the restaurants that are nearby, they are going to benefit. And we've seen real success stories in the Sirmac corridor that the BDC has been involved in. Some of you can remember, when I first came on, we took the 93010 bar at 6710 Sirmac. They defaulted on their note. We stepped in, we took the property back. The city lost no money as a result of that. We self-invested in it and picked up the losses that incurred there. We then brought in a tenant who became a buyer and renovated the property. That particular investment, they've already paid off their note inside a year and a half. That was $178,000. What we'd like to see is people that are investing, that care about their property. If this was somebody that was going to just invest in the property and not own it, we would not be as interested. You know, having somebody who owns a piece of property and making that investment on something that they're going to hold and be there is much different than somebody who's just speculating and saying, "Well, we'll see who I can bring in." So that's another thing that's important to us.
Yeah, that's, thank you for explaining that. And in terms of jobs, do you know how many of those jobs are new jobs, or are those jobs? Realty of Chicago is a pretty big real estate, you know, brokerage. Are those new jobs, or are those, or do you know the percentage of new jobs, or are those folks just coming from different offices?
There are some that are coming from different offices. So we're the net winner, so to speak, that those offices are relocating here. Some are transferring from the Berwin offices. As I recall, and Mayor, you can correct me, I think that there was at least 15 new jobs, one, five.
The current Berwin office he's keeping open to them.
Yeah, that were going to be associated. But again, his firm is expanding greatly, and he's looking at going into some new venues as well as property management that will help expand his operations.
Awesome. And then the last question I had, 150 agents, so I know, I know folks know this about me, but my family was involved in realty, in real estate for years, so I understand that you're moving around a lot when you're a Realtor, or you're a broker. How are we looking at parking in terms of staff? And is that 150 the total amount of employees?
Total.
Or will there be more part-time staff, too?
Yeah, no, that's a, we'll call it 150 FTEs, Full-Time Equivalents. And they would be coming in different time periods. We have a parking methodology that's within the code that gives credits for how many parking spots that you have on property, how many that are out in front of your property, if there's a bus that's nearby, even if there are bike racks to include parking that's nearby the vacant parkway. So all of those go into a formula saying, here's how you achieve your parking requirements. And I can share that, that would come out as part of the report. Otherwise, they'd have to obtain a variation, and they're not needing a variation. They're able to fall within the code to meet all those standards.
Okay. Yeah, I asked that question because I've walked that area often and talked to residents, and that's a really tough place for folks to park already. So just wanted, you know, to get more information on that, for sure.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. You know, previously, the prior owner had dreams of putting in a banquet facility, and that was not supported by council, for that mere fact of, if you want, went to bring in 150-plus people all at the same time with those vehicles, you'd inundate the area and it wouldn't work. So we will be following that very closely, Alderman, and happy to share that information with all of council.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one, but it's actually from a free, one of our other items on the agenda. Dave, for the homegrown project, so I know it was vacant before, how exactly is the tax, taxes going to work now with these pods? Are we actually going to generate taxes from that?
Sure.
Or we won't, there won't be any land taxes paid any longer, right?
Well, there are no property taxes that were paid because it's city-owned. Okay. What will happen, though, every one of these businesses, when they even make application to us, they have to have an EIN number. So they have to have a sales tax number.
Okay.
And any sales that are generated from there, they'll pay the sales tax, as well as the home rule sales tax on top of that.
Okay, cool. And then, so like, for example, the other, the Aronella Platte, so this, obviously, we weren't getting taxes paid on that either. And now it's been divvied up, so eventually the county will add those tax bases to the property owners?
Correct. Everybody will see some increase in their property taxes as a result of having more land.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just indulge you with one other item, just because I want to follow up from a report that occurred in Facebook. And there was some confusion and misinformation floating around the social media regarding the Ridgeland TIF. And the BDC has a policy of not engaging with social media posts, but I want to take the opportunity to publicly clarify some of the points that were raised, because I think it's very important. On March 10th, 2020, this board approved creation of the Ridgeland TIF. On February 21st, 2021, the BDC, acting as the TIF administrator on behalf of the city of Berwin, requested the transfer of $50,000 from the Depot TIF to the Ridgeland TIF. And these funds were covered for, or to cover the consulting fees and other costs incurred at the time of creating that TIF. This amount was approved by the city of Berwin budget at city council on March 9th, 2021, and you can find that in the 2021 annual budget on page 91. This transfer was possible due to state statute, which allows transfers if two TIF districts touch one another. This $50,000 was left open-ended, but the belief was that the funds would be repaid as the Ridgeland TIF generated increment over time. However, as both the Depot TIF and the Ridgeland TIF share the exact same taxing body members, this transfer would not increase the tax burden on any party. The $50,000 transferred had already been generated via an increment in the Depot TIF. Any positive fund balance remaining in the Ridgeland TIF at the time of its close will be transferred back to the Depot TIF in an effort to reimburse for part of, or all of the initial transfer. There was also some misinformation regarding the developer of Ridgeland Estates at 3,000 Ridgeland. The developer made the decision not to pursue TIF funds because they were not needed to complete the project. Further, the BUT4 test that we used could not be met. So even if the developer said, "Oh, I still want money, even though I don't need it," we would turn them down because the BUT4 test said, "You don't need the money for your project. There's enough profit that's going on in that deal." So finally, the Ridgeland TIF ended not because of a lack of revenue, because it was no longer needed. When the city approved the development of 3,000 Ridgeland, staff instructions at that time were to end the TIF. The recent JRB meeting was the appropriate time to advise the other taxing bodies of what had happened. I am continued to be miffed by people who fail to report the facts correctly, and even more so when they repost incorrect information without verifying it. But know this, if I wanted a job as corrector of false information in the social media arena, I would never be unemployed. So if you're looking to obtain the facts, I encourage anyone to contact me or a member of my staff, and we'd be happy to respond to you on those facts. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn the committee in the hall?
So moved.
Ruiz, by Lennon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. See you back at 8 o'clock.
The camera stays on, folks, don't forget.
So, for a regular agenda, should we do, if your post agreement comes in toward the zoning, do you want to just defer our asset until we do zoning first, and then the others?
No, I don't think we need to answer.
Okay, I just want, thanks.
No, I thought about that when you called me on that. And I said, "No, it completely doesn't matter."
Hey, Joe, do you want me to call you back about 5 to 8?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Marge, do you want to have it written down? About what I wrote?
You can submit it if you'd like.
I don't need to submit it. If it makes your life easier, that was the only thing I was going to say.
Well, I don't have a reservation with this. Okay. I'll just say it was a spontaneous one.
So, how's it do to be memorialized? You will be in Cook County records forever. Not that you're not there already.
That's funny.
Good.
That's like good or bad.
Gary, you want to go outside for a smoke?
Gary.
Oh.
Gary, Gary.
Well, not with a hair in it.
What's happening? I don't even have a hair in me.
Well, not with a hair though.
He doesn't eat any fruit. Just wants attention, that's it.
He's a lot like Bob.
You don't eat food, you just need attention.
That's right. Mr. Gary, I'm telling you, I'll see you buddy. So you can go home and work tonight, Bob.
I gotta do, uh...
You have no choice. You got company coming or what?
I gotta get this, these rooms done by Saturday to get carpeted. So I gotta pull the shoe off. Cause the carpeting's gotta come, and then I gotta stain where the shoe was.
Gotcha.
I'll get it done.
All right.
You know?
You will.
There's enough hours.
Hours in the day?
In the, uh...
Who is this? Oh, is that a wedding? Say I've been cleaning since then.
Well, just tell me it wasn't, uh, pre-COVID.
No, it was just a month ago.
Okay, this is George's Christmas card.
Gary, are you cheating on me? No, just loving on me in the other room. Look at you. All right, or somebody else just dropped me? Drop me like a bad habit? Don't give me those dreamy eyes. He's giving me those dreamy eyes. It's working. Yeah, it's working.
Look at how he looks at you.
Mm-hmm. Giving me dreamy eyes while some other woman's rubbing up on me. Look at you. He's like, whatever. You still love me.
He's saying you want your turn from down here.
I know, right? He's like, gotta come and get it, woman. He's like, where are you going? Where are you going? Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, look at you. Look, oh, look at him. That's right. I'm the model, baby. I'm the model. Oh, my God, that's so funny. That is so cute. He's like, damn, she won't be a long one.
Go get her, Gary. Go get her. Go get her.
Well, like I said, a lot of other people that worked with me, they were in the other video to take off their clothes.
He's like, horrible. All for you. Hey, baby. You want to chase you out, Jason. You want to chase him. I think he's going to get mad when I go home.
I know.
I mean, it sounds terrible, but it, I mean...
There's going to be pay boxes all over downtown.
You can't have peanuts.
No, but Gary, you can pee on the pay box.
You can pee on nuts?
No, you can put pee on the pay box. Right?
No, I had to burn dental, that's why.
The one on rural, or on, uh, Oak Park Avenue?
No.
Oh, on Stanley, then? Call the one next to the store. Oak Park Avenue's gonna be open, they're gonna wait in parks. Both sides of the street. That's where they can call.
But they can use that monitor now, right?
Yeah? But if they're on Oak Park, they're gonna be reloaded and be removed. Or like two weeks. Right there. I have a little push. For the water main, under the track. Park, now Stanley, like you do it now, it's been half a day from there before, right? Which uploaded for about two weeks. It'll be right in front of George. I mean, we're gonna come to this, so don't- Perfect. Perfect! So, you will ask both the property. We're not even in that, they're not even getting that for the property.
But, there is a provision, the state law, you say that there's a court taking the property away. And all the taxes are paid. They're very, they're expected that they're being paid on the thousand dollar taxes, and they have to sign off on the taxes. But as a people every year, they're depending not like taxes, who is on the bottom?
What's going on?
Well, one of the two said-
Well, what I did, I did before I got sick, and I would do all the tailings. My kids are vulnerable. But yeah, so, like I said, uh, you know, I thought you wanted to go up there and- No, I mean, I, I mean, I can, I can, I can, I can- Alright.
Tom, when's the department getting their support, Tom?
I'm sorry, what's that?
When's your department getting their support?
I don't know!
I'm, I'm bringing Skittles next week.
And, and throwing it around? Cause I'd love to, O C.
Yeah. The, uh, support out there, these departments, they're sort of lovely, sold. So we did the swearing, it started out, for the dog. And they invited some northern high school kids, and a special lady, taking a plan, and some other kids that normal would be looking up in. For, I've worn out dogs on my- She kind of reminds us of my dogs, who took five years. And here, this dog was very old, and it started propagating. And it gets such an absurd, going, block and crowded, and just so, even if I go third. And so I had written up something to you that's on there, cause I thought- And so, how did I refuse it? Well, well, actually, what you did was, I went down, and I read, yes, I was reading the old box, like, I'm trying to-
We were waiting for you to come back. We were waiting for you to come back. Yeah. Okay, I'll get that fixed. Yeah. Well, there's, there's really directions right in the back there.
No!
Frankie, come here.
Hello?
Hello, Alderman Carmichael, it's Marge Paul, we're almost ready to start.
Sound good?
Okay.
Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting to order, please?